So I'd like to call the... Oh, I'm sorry. Are you ready? I'd like to call the July 2nd, 2019 Halifax Committee meeting to order. We are beginning our meeting with the organization. So it's my two minutes of thing where I get to be in charge. Would anyone like to make a nomination for chair?
You can say your charge.
No, no, thank you though. Anyone like to make a nomination for chair? I nominate Mr. Chair. Any other nominations? All in favor?
I have accepted.
How long's that party? Okay, so all you are saying, thank you.
What I think in the audience, like, we acknowledge this schedule to speak at this time.
I want to go over the organization chart. Oh, sure. Um, do you want to be vice chair?
I nominate Allison to be vice chair.
Second? All in favor? Hi. Gordon, you want to be our secretary? You're so good at taking Kobe's notes.
Not clerk, secretary.
Andrew.
Okay, so, are you?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a nominee for that?
Yeah.
Yeah? I nominate Gordon.
Second.
Second chair. Okay, all in favor? Um, and then after that, Allison, are you still open to then being the pastime?
Sure.
Okay, nominate Allison as the pastime. All in favor?
I agree.
Um, do you want to do the whole thing right now? Not at all, right? It could be to look like it's everybody okay, anyway. This is listed right here. Isn't it pretty cool with this?
We just make a motion to please. That's current posture.
Yep, yep, that's right.
I make a motion to say the board has listed on the organization meeting for chair. I think one change, some will still be reasonable.
Oh, I can, that's fine. We'll have an update for today, though. Wait, why don't you take something off my plate? Why don't you still be that guy? Why don't we leave it just like it is right here? It looks like I have all been loading stuff. Come on, I need this called things, give me a break.
I already changed it, you have to do it.
Nope. Moving in, we get a motion as printed. Second? Okay, all those in favor? Hi. Thank you for working on the progress. We can do it. Uh, everybody else, please review the minutes from May 13th.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion for review of minutes?
Sure.
Second? All in favor?
Nine.
Review the minutes. Hi. Bye.
So, do we have to sign that topic?
We never have. Of the minutes?
Yeah.
No, no, we never think. Okay.
I have to do that for, because I have to do that for signing for the hand for...
What's that?
For the slot, I have to sign. Let's get some minutes on that.
To tell the record, right?
Yeah.
We never have.
Okay.
Did you put that up?
Yeah.
Uh, we're sort of circulating, do we need a, we need a new single signer about what's on here?
Well, the first one is for what did you decide, so on the third, the two three lines, did you sign that for ours?
Okay.
But then on the second page, I think it's a key score, just to make sure we have that.
Okay, so we do want to talk about that then? The first one was just Christine said to let you know if there were single, signature lines on board. Oh, I see what you're saying, okay. Um, I have one correspondence to report, does anybody else? Summer time, kids are out, building closed.
Yeah, one piece of business correspondence, for us to discuss that. Do you update the police street and fire chief that's a loss of one of the... And students to the school.
Okay, I saw that correspondence, but I guess I can't really, I don't think that would be what I got to point to that, so can you?
I didn't, no, it was just so that there's a policy in place that in the school, police street and fire chief, so if something happens, if the school is not able to, it's a school thing. And so, it's a...
So, if, so I, I guess I was thinking to be square with the conversation, but it's just butt up. Um, we have relationships with police and fire, and if something happens to one of our families, we usually seek to notify them, because it will impact the child and the school. And we've had a couple situations that the school wasn't notified, matter that we were prepared to help the case. So we're just working on planifying that process.
So, sorry, what is that type of police and fire?
Police and fire who respond to incidents that may impact the child.
Oh, oh, you're talking about accidental death, not like...
Or, or it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be a death, it can be anything.
Where did this come from? Were you surprised by that? Back from the school principal, I guess? Wrong, to, well, goes to Slagman, I guess, that was on that chart.
I asked him.
So, so that there's, there is some sort of policy where, like, the event that happened with my family, it's good, the school was notified, she was teaching somewhere, so the school was notified of something. And had helped the best for nineteen thousand school. And so, there's something that happens, just to acknowledge, like, over weekend, like, school vacation or something, that there's a policy in place that the school is listed as someone to notify.
So the conversation also will fall around the...
Right, and people agree with their rights. But the school should be notified so that...
If there's a child involved, this...
I, I think that's apparent, but...
So when the student is coming from a traumatic event, it's very helpful if we are aware of the child, additional supports, if the child has some difficulties during the day, if you're aware of this traumatic event. It is for the safety and security of students. It has always been that way, but we've had some new staff and some notifications that normally they places hadn't happened, but it's a change of staff.
So the, I'm sorry, so the policy is in place now or not?
It's, it is a...
Then it's policy?
It's not a written policy, we have a memorandum with the community concern, with the police and people who need money for different events. And that's a place where normally information is shared, if something's going on, deciding to support the students, if students are making difficult choices, have a lot of better choices, things like that. That has always been in place. Generally, within a town, if you have a child who is going through a traumatic event, you want to be able to provide support necessary for the case. So the intervention, the guidance counselor, the principal would be aware of, so that when the child comes into school, we're sure that the child has safety concerns.
So the correspondence is asking us to create a written policy?
No.
I know, I'm sorry, I just... It's not, it's just to reiterate that there should be communication with government or the policy department. Okay. It's not so much a policy, policy. And there are policies, regulations, all like, safety, counseling, communications, and stuff like that. Okay?
I mean, sometimes it's a safety concern.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and for all the...
Sure.
So if we're not notified and prepared, we provide the supports for the student, or the student may not be in the situation that we should need in school. And if we aren't aware of that, poor choices made overnight, we might not know that. So sometimes we, we have to have some ability to, have to be able to...
I'm not being so blunt with communication, I thought we were saying that we need to enact a policy to the parent, talk to school, whatever, children.
Oh, no, no, not at all, it's more to provide support as needed, or whatever the kind of situation.
What is, what is, how sensible, what is?
Exactly.
I'm not, I'm not...
No, 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 it's not anything different, it's not anything different.
Okay.
Just, you know, you want to make sure that, especially with these small children in particular. If something happens, we want to make sure to know, the safety is communicated. And sometimes if family is struggling, they don't contact us to let us know, but they're like, no, it's a little crazy. Is there, no, it's a little crazy.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Underfitting business?
I don't know if this is a form of a niche business or not, but, oh, sorry, it was, it was, did we, have we done any feedback, or anything on this?
We have, to my knowledge, nothing has happened that has been out in the world. So when it will break, or when the main issues come about August, when the families discover, they can't change it. Sure, because they have their timeframe. So right now, all quiet, I'm with us for a minute. But in about August is with, if possible, maybe did a nice job, they got their letter out, they got their reminders, you know, it's in the handbook. But I would not be surprised if we had some parents who are unhappy and hadn't followed the system.
What is the deadline?
It was, it was a list of four.
June 13th, 15th, so far?
No, nothing has happened yet, so I would anticipate it will come out August. Yeah, but so far, so good.
Great.
In business?
Future gentleman, safety, everything you want to talk about in this meeting? Reports of safety, ways, policy?
No.
Associations?
Do we have like, eight people?
A lot. We have got, see, then you don't issue it to the fall.
Yeah.
So, is your subject, is that a word?
Somebody thinks you're really ugly, I've never seen anything like it.
Uh, so...
I think, I think, um, yeah, no, normally it's in the fall, I don't know, because I think doing my entire amount that people make... Unfortunately, it's a contract end, so it's shared. Does it feel like it happens on, yes, I think it's just, I think Halifax is on the share, maybe Halifax is on. No, I'm not sure Halifax is on, I think it's still like Halifax in the share.
The tour, great.
Great.
Because it was like here, but...
You really?
Yeah.
I'm just curious.
Do you want me to read the...
That one, that one's good. Pat, did you meet?
We did, we did, we just had our, you know, close out for the year, and we'll let it stay steady all throughout the year. And they're currently running their extended school year program, and their building project is moving on to the next stage. So they're talking about purchasing a building in Plymouth that will house all their admin offices and the whole seaside program, which is the Ellen Crystal program, and a couple of the specialized communities who probably live there too, so. In which class? All of them, they're hoping to purchase that soon, and get start construction on that. And then Tiffany just asked Joy if we could send her an email of once everyone's done with the, the reorganization, of who's assigned to the pack, and let's see if it's sent to them. And that's a good master. Okay. And that's pretty much it, they're thinking they possibly will have a surplus, so we may be getting some more of that. We got them all. Cool, like that is, so yeah. That's it. You can write out a little bit of reports, the local program, the local library. E.T.R., would you fill me? Would you?
I think there will only be between our last meetings and go back.
Okay. Couple of budgets with not even over, I think there's one for only, on the video. And then you, third one, I couldn't make it, so that was just a brief conversation about... Is it back on the table first, is that correct?
You see?
That was in the past.
Yeah.
In your package, right, you have a financial, I suppose, kind of, I don't know. And you have successfully completed the financial year?
Yeah.
As you move to financial, you'll see that through some of the smaller things, there are deficits. And the fact is, when I was doing this one in the fall of 2017, it was still negotiated, so all those increases I put into the teaching line, so you'll see the teaching line, day of the day, and special education, so you'll see the surpluses. And then there'll be offsetting deficits in nurses, library, and things like that. The exception to that is custodians, part of the group of negotiations, but custodians also put in a lot of overtime in the fall to finish the project for the windows and doors. They did a lot of overtime just recently to get the school plan out, so that this five-something teaching project could start. And then they did a traditional winter overtime when we had some kind of, because that's what that deficit is. So the other words, I wanted to bring to your attention, homeless transportation. It's pretty significant, it's sharing a budget of about six thousand dollars. One of the pleasant surprises in utilities, we have savings of electricity, gas. If you recall, when I was budgeting last night for 2019, I had built in for the lighting project that we had with the end to school that was being funded through this monthly electric bill. But last June, the town decided that they would pay that up with some of the current green community funds that are available, so they paid that whole project up. So when you took the surplus in electric account, that meant that some savings that we have experienced. The gas account also had a savings account. The electricity was thirty thousand, and gas was fourteen thousand. And the gas was some reduced usage for Austin. And we can renegotiate the contract, and that included unlimited volume of coal the whole year, especially when it's winter months and we had some real significant events, cold weather events. So that made a difference, it kind of streamlined our bill throughout the year. So it's hard to mention that. Part of the biggest strain on the regular day, the day, and special education, because of that, within schools, and contracted services, is a deficit there, that's a lost line in the regular budget of thirty thousand dollars. That, that's a lot of occupational, physical therapy evaluations that have to be done. And that can be unpredictable, because sometimes not thoroughly entered into. But, once we get into some special education counts, we're doing the surplus and tuition line, it is a relative, some changes in place, and as well as, we applied for extraordinary looking at a couple of students earlier, which are good. And they received a hundred and ten thousand dollars this year, a extraordinary increase. That's part of that surplus and tuition, and we'll go back to town. Transportation does have a deficit. And then in artificial population, we also have surplus of over a thousand dollars. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to kind of give you some highlights, there, in your package, there is a cover sheet that kind of spells out where we are right now in the budget. This is a little difficult, and if you see the passing, because I'm trying to make this work between the financial reports and the payment, as well as the way the town budgets. So I'm trying to answer a lot of questions on this here, but hopefully it'll make sense once this topic appears. At the top of the page, you just started, what we're doing, the event is an info, just after that, number two, this is a brief summary that's included. When you see the total of it, the total of the regular day budget, as well as special education accounts within the school, that's a summary of seven, that's a separate one, six million, with a total surplus of two hundred and five thousand. But if you go over to the right, we split it up between the regular day, special education tuition, and special education transportation. So it's two different balances within those accounts. And then the pre-closing balance, what I want to mention is under regular day, we have sixty-three hundred dollar balance. But then we also have some comments, those items that have been received or ordered, we are receiving and going to share. So we can book eight thousand seven hundred dollars of items outstanding, and we're still expected to receive them in the process. Within special education, tuition, and transportation, there are no invoices outstanding, so we have, we can have everything at the same time. So after I list out all the different occurrences that are on there, you see a close-up balance. So that brings our close-up balance in total to a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. Between regular day, we have a small deficit, tuition, we have a pretty significant surplus, and then special education transportation, again, a deficit. What we've put up down is our submit to the town, line transfer request between special education tuition to transportation to cover that deficit. And then the portion that we're going to transfer to the regular day budget of five thousand dollars is to cover some of those contracted ser, some of the contracted services deficit that we're not able to absorb from the regular budget. So after all that is done, we still expect that it will be a total of a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars going down to the town between those three bunches of line items, plus two thousand dollars that will go down to the town at registered occupation.
Wow. How much would that be? Good, yeah. So the majority is coming from special education. So, you know, to say to know what budget it was. You know, a hundred and ten is the surplus rate, and then the rest is special education, some movement of students.
So...
It was a very good, it's a very good year for us, to be able to turn around to the town. We're all encouraged with expanding schools and stuff. We also were able to cover all the overtime of the custodians, and we just covered everything for movement, but the, some of the extra things that we didn't purchase, part of the, didn't have any safety risk to be part of.
With this, or with the...
This is all the special... Yeah.
This balance is after a long time, I would say.
Oh, okay, okay. So we really, and as I said, we, we had a couple of really good things happen. So I think the town would be really pleased to be safely signing that. Awesome. Yes.
So, could those items have been covered by the highest pressure? Carver?
I think there was a surplus, perhaps, that had been brought back to the town.
Okay.
We, what, I, I think we've been at some meetings, but basically what I, I said to Charlie, we didn't know that's some special education changes, was that we would encumber and pay for as much as we could with our budget, and then when we couldn't, we'd go back to the town. Because initially, we agreed to the town government, what had been some of those things, and then possibly we wrapped those meetings. Um, we were able to keep that within our budget. So, you know, that, that allows, the money either way is the town's money, it's just this way, it's, you know, it's...
It's...
The school is being self-sufficient, exactly. But, but just, I think that for the town.
Yeah.
And the town seemed pretty happy when, I'd say, we looked to do that, so.
And one other thing I wanted to mention in the walk that you were doing next minute, was so the new offices will hire. The school was paying for, the part, the school purchased the equipment, and PTO, the installation, so the school purchased the equipment. And the ceiling and voices, they were forty thousand, that was coming on the hundred each time. And then actually, the amount, it's weird to be willing to watch it. So there's a good organization concert, we do a good organization concert, and we're also late to the town. So any questions? There's a lot of numbers to throw out there, but...
It's really business, it's really business. So, you know, as I said, a lot of things went right that didn't always happen. But, you know, as you said, we were, we were really pleased with the way things worked out through the town, and so. They were expecting that under ten, but not for that, so, and so.
You think that's a good element for the project?
I, I think so, and the families, they've been unbelievable.
That's great.
It's a whole new world.
There's only one way to go, Joe.
Yeah. Allison.
Why, Allison?
Yeah, whole different world, I cannot disagree with that. Yeah, no, really good company, so.
I wouldn't think...
Well, thank you for the time, you're almost standing apart in court, but they almost seem like a lot.
I just kind of...
It's...
People in a base in office, many of the people that just need to be make it work, right, let's go, make it work.
Yeah.
That's great. But don't ask them to start off, they're all in case.
I'm tired, girl. One down, three to go.
I'm gonna go with the item under me, is the signature sign.
Okay. So somebody needs to be that supportive. Yeah. Tom, in.
So...
You can't be in one, right?
Oh, yeah, I can't be in one.
I think, I, I was not under the mission, I'm not a person to be...
Really? Yeah. So, can you...
But you have to sign as either this one from the old school committee or...
Paris, I didn't sign one. But this is, what, this is the school committee? To do? How frequently does it happen? Once a month?
It happens every month, so we're not needed. So when we have our schedule, it all goes once, so it's maybe four times a year.
You want, unless you want. Oh, yeah, come on, speak up now, now.
You want to, you can sign a sign, or...
So, Lawrence?
You're gonna bring them to my office?
You can do this to us.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Very good.
Wait, wait, it's not five bob, so you know, you know.
Only if somebody lets me go with that one.
Yes, yeah. So we'll, we will email and make sure, like, have your cell phone number to text.
Yeah, I would, I would just go, I would text, because anytime you'd school me, then I would have to call them, and be like, hey.
Check me in, I believe, I, or it's me, text, hold it, what is it, parent, can't, won't you?
Yeah, I just, I, I can turn it on.
Don't forget. Do we have to vote for that? Did you sell it?
Yes.
Four two nine six?
It is, like you said, it's on, talks vacation.
Gotcha. Every school.
I mean, that's a lot, they, well, to give a simple sign. Second. Third.
All in favor? Hi. Thank you, love.
Thank you.
And if he's not available, then three, three of us can go inside.
I mean, usually, you go pretty good, I think, right?
Last time, very.
Yeah.
Before we vote, everyone, do you see the sign?
No.
No.
Just that. Just you, oh.
That's probably pretty typical, autonomous signature.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
So we've already done the organization, so I just wanted to give a building update on the Springfield project, then.
Would you have another question?
No. Do we have to vote?
I'll go.
Sign on and transfer. Do we have to vote for?
Oh, the whole master product is signature, and that's what we've done in the past, it's...
I don't like it.
We, we have to have a formal award, but we can vote to accept the proposal. Vote to accept the close-up assessment, and do you want to enter the uniform, Adam? Uh, the inquiry report is due September 30th.
Oh, I will, we will.
I do have something else we need to sign, like, to engage the office to review the inquiry.
Oh, yeah.
Could, could some other line of transfers?
We've had one for the age back.
No, no, just town, why?
Right, it's department head.
Department head, department head, and finance, and so on, so...
Yes, yes, I just...
So you said?
Yeah.
You already said, yeah.
So I'll, I'd make the motion to approve the, was it, was it...
You can put it aside.
Second.
All in here. So I just want to give a quick update on the Springfield project for the elementary school. So we have the meeting weekly, they've gone incredibly well. We were, it started on the seventeenth as opposed to the twentieth, so we gained three days of school, and it was awesome. The town was very helpful in letting us make use of some of the custodians that came over and helped us line all the desks up, and get everything lined up in the buildings. I went over on Friday in jeans and a t-shirt, ready to go, and they were such a jiffy, and leaving, I'm incredibly disappointed. Back in the nick of work, I really looking for the moving desk. But they had, everybody was astounding. Matt Durkey was phenomenal in getting everything organized, getting all the projects done. Steve Pellal was amazing in getting all tech hands on deck, and getting everything moved out. All our equipment is safe. We borrowed the liftgate truck from the high school to do a load of chrome hooks over to Denne, where they're all safe and sound. You know, we purchased some parts, we moved everything in the safe area, some parts, purchased plastic containers so the teachers could put in their keyboards, their mouses, or their equipment that might get dusty. Everything went incredibly smoothly, it was astounding. Considering we ended school on Thursday, it was really amazing that people were able to pull that off. A lot of hands, and everybody was really busy, and very thoughtful, so it was very definitely a good show off. Again, Matt Durkey, Steve Pellal, I think it was really definitely to do with that. So they've been working steadily, it is a whole new world, and working with contractors, they have been pretty phenomenal so far. Gordon's made the last meeting, so I think he could agree. I am incredibly impressed, they're thoughtful, they're organized, they are, just have schedules, they have everything mapped out. They're thoughtful, they're organized, they are, have schedules, they have everything mapped out, and they are doing it. So it's been great, really, really pleasant work with them. We are not meeting this week because of the holiday. There will be a meeting on the 10th at 1:30, it will be the meeting. I'm not available here. Yes, it's in this building downstairs. I'm not available next week, so everyone's going, I believe, Kane or Matt would be there. I'm not available on the 10th. So, yeah, except for, they have to go. But it's, it's a great chance to get to see them and to hear how things are going. But so far, it's been incredibly smooth. We've been very pleased. Kane has moved out to his trailer. And it's really a nice trailer. I can hardly believe he's him. It's a really good trailer. If you haven't stopped it, it's really very impressive, it's surprising. It's actually quite a recent. Yeah, it's surprising. Well, Matt had put Brian and Kane in the same room, and Matt had his own big office, so Kane doesn't have to have that. We shall see, but. Anyway, things are moving ahead, they have a plan where they anticipate everything getting done, and we should be all set. Give me this.
Other than the fact that the windows over the area, seems like they fixed it up, but they found a solution to look.
Nice.
They found solutions versus the windows that always come in.
Yes, yeah, they, it is, it has really been a new world working. They've been wonderful. Well, like, when we were going with the roof project, you know, I felt all alone with the roof project, that they were problem solvers. They just dealt with it, they were timely, they were professional. This feels very similar than to possibly even that at the place of work. So we're, I'm optimistic that I will not have to send our students to the builder's house.
I thought you were saying you were going to.
Yeah, yeah. I'm optimistic that we will get it done so far, it looks pretty promising to me.
That's awesome. I feel like we chase these people off.
Yep. So it's very good. And that is all I have, Gordon makes a summary, I have nothing else.
Do you have a?
But I had a schedule in some of those.
They are three days ahead. I was going to say, anybody's assistant, I do have their, their schedule, the three schedule ahead. This one is six, nineteen minutes. So they're, they're moving very well. As I said, it's, it's truly impressive what they've.
Oh, what was the, what's happened inside the building?
This is not that. Part of the second.
They were repaired on the street, but I don't know if they're there.
You could see.
No. That's a good day.
Oh, no, no, I can see in the multiple purpose room.
Yes.
Yeah, and it said that there was an issue with the insulation on the way that the floor is going to sell. You know, overhead, and they encapsulate that area with some wires.
Oh, right. It's already been all the way.
And that's what's awesome. Yeah, they, they've been trying to keep the kids off of that area for a really long period of time.
That's amazing.
We nearly said that we drove by, so.
It's because they don't want us to walk on it.
And Matt is working on the concrete wall.
Oh, okay.
He's, oh.
It's very successful, you know, just the ceiling.
Yeah.
Okay, excellent, so did you have to go through the historical? I know we've been talking about it.
I think it's just this.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
That's like, okay, I can't stand.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. So we need to adjourn regular meeting to open executive session, only to back order, we need to adjourn. But before we do that, we can list the dates that we need to remember coming up. August 23rd is the new teacher orientation. We expect they'll be in the building for that, or no?
Yes, the, the plan is that the building will be available August 20th. Okay, they should be. 20th, on time first, yes, is sort of their goal. So the teachers have some time to get in and set up classes. We're hopeful it will be before that, but if you got that date, I think we're going to be happy.
Okay. The 26th and 27th of August is teacher and service day. August 28th is the first day of school. September 2nd is Labor Day, so we're in school. And the third is our school committee meeting at 6 o'clock in the laboratory of the elementary school. So we roll call.
So did you make a motion in the second?
No, I'm asking if we need roll call, and then I'm going to make the motion. Yes. Okay. So I moved that the adjourn regular meeting to have an executive session for the special personnel, so to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21, only to reopen the regular meeting to each other, please. Okay. Alice?
Yes.
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 Alice?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.